We're going to call the meeting to order. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Good evening. We're going to start off with some reports. The junior senior high school food drive.
Hello, my name is Katie Saplinsky and I'm a senior here at SOTUS and also the student body treasurer. Alright, so this past holiday season, the junior senior high school student council decided to take part in the Together We Can food drive. Homerooms were challenged to a competition. The homeroom who donated the most won a prize. Ms. Campbell's homeroom came in first place and won like a breakfast. And additionally, Ms. Miller's homeroom received honorable mention and received a hot chocolate bar. This has been our most successful food drive to the day. This picture above is just one of three cards of food that was donated. Over 600 items were donated to our local food pantry, which fed 200 SOTUS families. Yep, that's it. You're welcome.
The slogan is Together We Can. Do you get it? We can. Alright, oh my god, tough crowd. Okay, so um, thank you Katie for presenting, but it took a huge effort. But Katie is like a huge backbone of the other program. Heard another young lady by the name Jasmine Claya Chavez. They are the backbone of that along with Ms. Cannon. So I just want to say thank you also. When you see 600 items, that equals 200 families and that is what's so important to us. And so again, thanks a lot to the student council for that. Thank you Katie a lot. Katie is very humble, you know. She, that's huge. I am going to be presenting on the midterm results and ADFs for, well, I'm going to present on midterms. I'm going to have Dr. Pete's, who actually, fun fact, Katie's mom. She's going to present on something called ADF. And so we'll get started. We'll start first with our department data. If you look up here, we have nine departments. So a couple of those departments are teased out a little bit, but it's actually nine departments because tech and, tech and business are together and so is health and PE. So in those departments though, they're broken up here. What you're seeing to the right, those last two columns, they're in gray or green. Those are the number of students, I'm sorry, the number of grades that are passing in those departments. So in the art department, 14.6% of the grades are between a 65 and an 84. But 81.5% of those grades are between 85 and 100. That's what you're reading right now. Okay? If you want to know the actual numbers, that's all right beside it, the actual empirical data. Now, business, 54.8% have an 85 to 100. The ones that are in green are your core classes. So your cores are your math, science, social studies, English, and Spanish. Those are required classes. So those numbers are also up there and they are, they hang tough with those music and art departments, which their rates are 92% and 84%. Core classes can't do that because they're mandatory classes. But I mean, they did a great, a phenomenal job this marking period. At the bottom in yellow, you'll see, those are the average for the entire school. So we average, 60% of our grades are between an 85 and 100, and 33% of our grades are between a 65 and 84, making 93.2% of our grades are passing. 93.2% of the grades of the entire school, there's 3,167 grades given out at the market, at a market period too. And 92% of them are passing. We are very proud of that. Now here is the midterm data that comes along with that, because the midterm to me is where the rubber meets the road. Sure, you can have grades, but a lot of times, you know, a student can, we put so many safeguards in place for our student. If you fail a test or a unit test, please go and get corrections made so your grade can go up. Please take the test over again. Learn what you didn't learn. That's the point of school. Not to have a one shot at this and if you didn't make it, I guess you should have studied more. We're done with that method. So those grades that you saw earlier, you can get an 85 to 100 or at least be passing off of, off of effort. But the midterm is that one shot grade and that's what you're looking at here. But that first one is English. You see 40% of the grades are 65 to 84 and 16% are between 85 and 100. I have some great news for English though. Our honors ELA 8 class is not in there because a lot of the students were quarantined during the actual test. So they took it, they're taking it now, so it's not on there. So honors English 8, you can bet that's going to increase the 85 to 100 rate. English 10 is not on there and neither, for all the same reason. And then English 7 is not on there and I'm going to tell you some phenomenal things are happening in English 7. If you look at our iReady scores, which you'll see at the next board meeting, English 7 by far beats everybody with their, with their growth. So I'm looking forward to putting English 7 back into this chart soon and put it in the chart and I believe those numbers are going to go much higher. And the numbers right now, having 64% of our kids, I'm sorry, 54% of our kids already above that mark without the honors classes in there is pretty good. Language is at 58%, at 65 and 84, and 38% at 85 to 100. That's also missing Spanish 2 for the same reason. Because English 10 and Spanish 2 are the same grade level, so those kids are out. So when Spanish 2 is back in there, that's just going to increase the 85 to 100 range. Okay? The other classes are all in. Math is where it is, 45.2 and 23. Science is at 39 and 30, which is 70% of the students passed the science exam, the midterm. And the social studies were already at 83 and that, that exam is already, should be an indicator of how the students will do on the, on the final exam. So we're doing okay. I, you know, I'm, you know, I'm not happy, but we're doing okay with our first predictor sitting through a two and a half hour to three hour exam at the midterm mark. One thing that we're not doing okay with is so many students are just out because of the, you know, the nature of the beast right now. So I wanted to give you some more data. I know I was supposed to give you midterm data, but I wanted you to have some more. And this is grade level data. Same, same stuff we're talking about, which is how many people are, how many students are passing. And this now is at seventh, eighth grade, ninth grade, you know, breaking down by grades. If you look at seventh grade, 93 or 94% of the students are passing. 56% of them, 56% of the grades are 85 to 100, which is mastery. On, you can read them all yourself, so I won't do that for you guys. But I'll tell you, if you look at the bottom, in the yellow, that's your average. We are averaging 91.6% of our students are passing all the classes. Okay? Now this is where the rubber meets the road. This is the last slide I have for you, okay? This is not classes anymore. Now we're talking about students. So if you look at that very first column, it says number of failures and it gives you the grades right below it. The second column says zero failures. So in seventh grade, there are 59 students that have not failed anything. Eighth grade is 49 students that have not failed anything. So that's what you're looking at when you go down that list there. Towards the end, you'll see the total number of students in the grade. It says total. That's the total number of students in the grade. Beside that is the total numbers of students who failed something. You failed one class or more. So this is not great data. It's interesting because 93% of our grades that we receive in the school are passing grades. Somehow we still have a number of students failing. Totally 115 students have failed something. A healthy school has no more than 20% of the students failing. So for us, that'd be 82. So we're chasing 33 students off that list. What I, I'm basically saying that I don't like what we're doing and I'm going to stand and tell you that. The reason, but what I do like about it is, is the fact that we have this data. I know how to read this data and I know how to talk to the teacher or the team leaders about going back to their teams now and presenting this data to them. And that's what I do all week. This is the accountability measure that we've been holding up. This is our second year of doing this and I didn't present last year. If I would have presented this last year, it would have been around 180. But because of these things like this and what we've been doing, these numbers have been dropping every single marking period. So I expect it to be better the next time. But I'll tell you, we, what I basically do is I look at the column, the number one column. And you see there's 10 kids in grade seven that failed something. A kid just failing one course is alive, ready, willing to work. We got to figure out who they are. If I showed you the data that where I get this from, it's all the students' names and all their scores. And I can sit there and find out who is that kid that only has one failure? Who are those 10 kids? And we talk about that. What is it that we missed? And that's what we delve into at our team meetings every other week. We have department meetings one week, team meeting the following week, and it goes back and forth. And we talk about this stuff in both meetings. So the system is what I really love and what I would really be happy about. Talking about systems, I'm going to lead into the ADF and let Dr. Pete speak. I know I told you this a few years ago, two years ago, I'm sorry, not two, last year. We talked about something around behavior data. It was called BDFs. And we, I told you that we have a system for behavior data forms. They go into a computer, a kid gets in trouble, a teacher will write it into a computer system. It gets sent over to our dean. First thing in the morning, every day our dean wakes up, he gets into his office, he opens up his computer and looks at how many referrals he has. And then he exercises those referrals all day. Well, what is, where is the system for academics, which is the thing we're in school for? So we started an ADF instead of a behavior data form, an academic data form. And so now every day, Dr. Pete wakes up, she comes in, opens her computer and looks and says, well, how many ADFs do I have? Let me go exercise those ADFs. And that's the thing I'm really proud of. So I wanted to introduce it. And now Dr. Pete is going to just drive it home. Alright, thank you, Dr. Pete.
So this system, I have to say, is highly inventive. I don't think anybody else has this system. I've worked in four different school districts in the last 24 years and I've never seen anything like this. So. I have to change the slide. There we go. Okay. So when does a student get one? So like Mr. Allen said, I wake up in the morning, I come to work and I have a spreadsheet. And the teachers will refer students to me whom they've already tried to triage. So they've tried to work with a student, they've called home and for whatever reason, it isn't working. So they write in a Google form and that Google form is sent to me and I meet with the student. So what I do is I bring the student down and of course, when I call, I say they're not in trouble. Because when you get called down to the assistant principal's office, if you were like me, your heart goes aflutter. And they come down and we just have a nice conversation. And I'll ask them, you know, tell me about what's going on in English or math or whatever. And the student will tell me I'm struggling with this or I'm struggling with that. And I say, okay, what can we do? And we as adults can put every plan in place, but if the student doesn't have any buy-in, it's never going to work. Um, so we have a myriad of strategies that I have to offer students. We have weekend academy every weekend. We have a 10th period after school schedule. We have three to five support after school, either with myself or another academic interventionist. We have academic hall versus study hall. So if a student is failing two or more classes, they're put into academic hall. So they are getting more support. It's treated just like a regular class. They have to put their cellphone away and they get down to work. In study hall, it's a little bit more relaxed. They can sit in the cafeteria, kind of get, take a deep breath, check their messages, make their phone call home to mom, and then get busy because they're passing everything. So that's what we do. And also SIM meetings, student intervention meetings. So we meet with the parent, the counselor, the team. So we do a myriad of things. So what I do is we put that place, that plan in place. I talk with the student and then I call the parent that same day. And I said, hey, mom and dad, I've had this conversation with your son or daughter and this is the plan. And any feedback, any input? And then parents agree, give me their input, we put the formal plan together and then I communicate it to the team and we execute it. And then we monitor it. So we set a follow-up date. The student and I will set a follow-up date depending on if it's one, two, three or more classes. That follow-up date could be a week, two weeks, or the five-week point. And then I check in with them on a weekly basis. How are things going? This is what I'm seeing. And I try to pull them during their lunchtime, their study hall time, those types of things. So they're not missing academic instruction. So they always know where they're standing. And I teach them how to use school tool to monitor where they are. So this is a summary of the data. So this is quarter one data. So during quarter one this year, we had something called Win the Month, where we met with a group of kids. There were 18 of us, school counselors, myself, Mr. Allen, the MTSS team. And we had a group of kids we met every Thursday and they were our group. And if they were referred to on the ADF, we took our own kits. And so at the, at the first 10 weeks, we had a 38% closure rate. So MTSS met. And what you'll see in that chart, so the number of ADFs, you'll see 137, but there's only 105 kids. So that tells me that more than, one child had more than one ADF. That's what that means. Okay? So we sat down and we said, okay, we need to increase this. How are we going to do this? We need to streamline this a little bit more. So ADFs are now streamlined through my office. I wake up every morning, like Mr. Allen said, I look at them, I triage them, I put them into my calendar. And if for some reason I can't get to a kid for whatever reason, I have 18 other, or 17 other people that have relationships with these students that I can say, hey, can you meet with such and such today? I know he's on your basketball team. Can you help me out? So we had a remarkable closure rate this marking period that my team and I were really proud of. We had a 57% closure rate. That, that was increased by 21 referrals from Q1. Right now, we have 13 students who have an extension because of a COVID-related situation. So that will be updated in the next two weeks. And we continue to monitor our students who have not closed. So many of those students are already on our Q3 ADF and we are monitoring very closely. Any questions? Yes and no. So, so once they get there, they kind of find that it is a calming, relaxed environment. We do feed them very well. And when they get to know that it's not so bad and they're making progress, they, we see more of them continuing to come every Saturday. We have our regulars. Yeah, so, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. It's okay.
There's a threefold increase in 12th grade from first quarter or seventh quarter?
Yes.
Is there any reason for that?
Senior paper and government paper. That is the reason. So I've been working really hard with Juan and Tito in our English and, actually our humanities department. So we've decreased, there were originally 40 students in jeopardy. We've decreased that, I believe, down to 13. It's in my board report, off the top of my head. So we're working really hard and we're, I call them every week. I think parents get sick of hearing from me, but I call them every week saying, hey, this is where we're at. This is the progress we've made. I still need your son or daughter to come in and this is where we're available. So we're working hard to get them across the line.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
So we are going to have some additional topics for reports. We are adding 3.3. And Nelson will be giving us an update on the mask mandate. And also 3.4 to give us some updates about the book challenge for It Feels Good to Be Yourself.
Thank you Laura. So I wanted to take a moment just to provide the board with an update on the current school masking mandate and the court case that caused significant controversy throughout our state on January 24th. So on the 24th of January, as you know, a judge in Nassau County determined that a regulation of the New York State Department of Health regarding masks was null and void. And the judge ordered the Department of Health and Governor not to enforce them. On that same day, the Department of Health and Governor filed a notice of appeal to the Appalachite Division, Second Department in Brooklyn. That evening, the Commissioner of Education notified school districts that they should continue to enforce the masking requirements. The commissioner also notified school districts that same morning that schools should continue to enforce the masking requirement as they prepared the appeal. I received the email, as did other schools, and we followed this directive. The next day, on January 25th, a judge on the Second Department issued an order temporarily staying the lower court's order. Simply stated, the lower court's order was put on hold and the mask mandate remained in effect. On the 31st of January, a four-judge panel granted the motion by the Department of Health and Governor for a stay pending the hearing and determination of their appeal. The Attorney General's Office must take steps to perfect the appeal within 30 days, which is by March 2nd, 22. If the AG perfects the appeal, the stay will remain in place until the Second Department decision on the appeal. That gives you a quick summary on the court case. Yesterday, there was significant news throughout our state, where the governor announced that the current school mask mandate will remain in effect until most likely early March. However, the governor did state that the indoor mask mandate for businesses and indoor venues will be lifted today. It is important for people to not get these two mandates mixed up. Once again, the school mandate remains in effect, at least through our understanding until early March. With this, like other schools, we will continue to follow current protocols, work with the Department of Health and our school liaisons to the Department of Health to determine next step when staff or students do test positive. I would like to note that the number of student and staff quarantines here in SOTUS have significantly reduced, thankfully, due to some of the updated protocols that are put forth by the Department of Health. We continue to analyze data to look specifically for clusters. And when I say cluster, I mean two or more cases in any one particular, for example, classroom or athletic team. And then we work with the Department of Health to determine how to respond. I would like to publicly thank our school nurses and nurses aides who have done a tremendous job responding to the needs of our students and staff. And they have done this masterfully, managing all details related to tracing, testing, and communication, as well as our school principals who worked endlessly, nights and weekends on this task as well. I am deeply thankful for all of them. We can, our metrics continue to trend downward thankfully, as noticed by only one case in our district today, one student case. And this is truly due to the efforts of our students, staff, and parents. And I'd like to publicly say that I am extremely proud of our entire school system for how we've managed this virus. I'd also like to provide a quick update on the book challenge. I'd like to provide the board with an update on the book challenge request we received on Monday, January 17th, regarding a book titled It Feels Good to Be Yourself. Reference in policy number 8330, I charged Mike Serino, principal, and Heather Utes, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, to convene a committee to investigate and judge this book according to the Principles and Qualitative Standards stating in policy 8320, selection of library multimedia materials. This committee first met on Friday, January 28th. Each member was given a copy of the book ahead of time to read and prepare. The committee was scheduled to meet again on Friday, February 4th. Due to the closing of school that day, the committee was unable to meet. They are scheduled to meet again tomorrow, Friday, 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 February 11th. I expect that a final recommendation for the committee will be finalized and I will be able to report the committee's decision to the Board of Education at the meeting in March.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. So as we look in through to information, did everyone get a chance to kind of look over the budget work sessions? So tentatively, all those dates fit into our calendars. Alright. Alright. Any questions about the change orders? So we're going to move on to 5.0 matters for board discussion non-motion. At our last meeting in January, we definitely realized that we needed to update our public participation policy. And as we look at that public participation policy and the updates that need to be done to it, I would like to apologize to Ms. Travis and Ms. Young for not interpreting our public session and when you could speak. And that was my misinterpretation and I apologize for that. So I opened up the table to the board to kind of look, we've had a chance to look over the policies. What kind of changes do we want to see? Well, I, one of the things I, I think we need to really talk about too is how individuals who would like to speak but hadn't spoken or hadn't signed up during, for public speaking during session one, how should they let us know that they want to speak? Because ultimately, shouldn't they wait for public session two and sign the clipboard again? So that there isn't this, there isn't any sort of breakaway from us listening to whoever's presenting?
Are you asking for, are you asking for method or how they?
Yeah, like how should we handle that? Because at the last meeting, you know, I, I definitely thought, because there were people who've always signed up for public participation on the, just the sign-in sheet instead. And so I was trying to see, like, did anyone not sign this particular board?
You can have a second, second sign-up sheet. So when someone, when the first session starts and whoever it is that retrieves the clipboard then places a new blank sign-up sheet. So we have the list of who in order is going to speak. And while they're speaking, if someone else decides, oh, I would like to say stuff too, there's a new sign-up sheet. And then when we get to the second one, we can just repeat the process.
I, I, I agree with that. I think that that would eliminate any disruption.
And then when you start the second one, last call, anybody that then did it?
The other portion is, I think it said in there that we're only supposed to have 15 minutes per period. The other portion is, I think it said in there that we're only supposed to have 15 minutes per period. So that's probably an average of, what, five to six speakers per session? Pardon?
Yeah, because we just updated to four minutes, so.
Yeah, sure.
Right.
Four minutes. Four minutes per speaker.
So, I mean, three speakers is 12 minutes, if they take their full four minutes.
We, we could always up the time now. You know, I hope that the participation we're getting continues in the future.
I agree. I definitely don't.
To be honest, I don't think it's going to be. But we can increase the minutes now and we could always decrease them later on if it changes.
Okay. So should we have, should we have a limit on how many people speak in each session? I, I don't know the best way to do that.
If we increase it to 20, that would give us five speakers per, per session.
Okay.
Do we like that? I mean, and then for part two?
It would be another.
It would be another, or whatever, allotted time. Any thoughts?
Since we have like a time limit on individual time, we probably, you know, just to limit the total number of speakers. If you say have a 20 at a time limit and, you know, five, six people sign up, it might just be a show, you know, who else agrees with that?
Yeah, because you got, you got people that go over. So it's not fair to the people that are last in sign-in if we run out of time and they haven't had a chance to speak because people go over. Shouldn't go over, right? We're trying, we, we gotta.
Right, and I want to hear what the comments are too, you know, like we, we want everyone to have their share.
It would, it would make sense to do it per speaker, not per time. That way it allows everyone the opportunity to.
So is there a limit of how many speakers we want per session?
To be honest, I don't, I don't think there should be a limit, but I'm one of seven. So if you guys think there should be a limit, I'm willing to entertain. Well, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to sit here for three hours. I mean, I still want to go to bed.
Right, optimistically, I mean, we have a small town, so I don't foresee 50 public participation people signing up. So at the same time, what Jeff's saying, I, I also am in favor of not limiting to the amount of people because we certainly don't want to discourage our public from joining us and providing their insight. That's really why we're here and who, for the most part, we represent. So we don't want to limit them. But to the point Laura's making, if we have unlimited and we do have the one night that 50 people show up, what, what time is it going to be that we get out of here when?
Because, because the issue is also the topic, right? If we have 50 people show up and they have 50 different things, then I want to hear all that. But 25 of them are going to speak about the same item. I don't want to listen to the same thing 25 times. It's ridiculous. So, you know, it's, it's a tough.
What are you saying, Tony? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
We're obligated to let them speak one way or the other. So if they don't get to speak by the second session, then we obligated to have, hold another meeting, a special meeting in order to hear that.
Excuse me, could you guys use the microphones?
Thank you for letting us know.
Sorry.
I'm pretty sure that we're obligated to allow them to speak one way or the other. But if they're not eligible to speak in the second session, then we have to hold a separate, special meeting in order to accommodate their questions or their concerns.
So I think if we limit the first one to five people, sorry, I have the back, sorry.
I'm, I'm working on it. So if we limit the first session to five people and then we should reserve the right to adjust the second session. If it's one extra person, so we don't have the special meeting, then I think we allow it.
How about, um, perhaps if we have Regina reach out to other districts to see what their policy may be? I know we've had this checked by Erie One and, you know, through, through them, but at the same time, maybe we, there's a better way to be doing it. But in the interim, if you would like to sign up for public session after the first session has begun, you need to sign up for the second session. And I think that makes sense. Does that?
Yeah, and there's obviously flexibility with this because I just noticed our policy has, the first session is 15 minutes. I'm willing to bet the last few months, each first public participation session has exceeded 15 minutes.
It has.
So, like, obviously, we're accommodating for that, but we also should have our policy in place to set a limit, not as far as we're limiting participation, but a time limit so we have a reasonable meeting. Whether that limit is like an hour, which I don't necessarily think is that ridiculous. I don't think we'll ever reach it, but we should have it just to protect us from, like Jeff said, listening to the same context from 25 different people, five, four minutes each. So, um, I'm fine with having a line in the sand policy that this is, this shall not be exceeded. If it does, we will have a separate session just so we can ensure we get out of here at a reasonable time and we're not listening to the same thing repeatedly. But I'm also in favor of reaching out to what other districts are doing because I'm certainly open to ideas, maybe their process is better than ours.
Right. Yeah, we've definitely exceeded that 15 minutes. And that's fine. We want to listen to what the community's saying.
That's fine, but we want to have those parameters set. I mean, we've been consistently exceeding the 30 minutes, which is fine. But we should have a policy that is more in line with a, a reasonable time limit.
I'm fine with, I'm honestly, I'm fine with 20 each or 30 each or a shortened first session and a lengthier second session to accommodate.
Well, I mean, if you, you know, 30.
Everybody give a 30, 30 per session, a 30, a 30 again.
Yeah, I would say, I would say.
Okay. Right. Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll continue to get more information and change that as needed.
I, I have one other question regarding the four minutes. Each speaker has the time available for four minutes per person. Is this per person? Could somebody sign up for the first session, speak for four minutes, and then speak at the second session? Or is this four minutes total per board meeting? For per meeting?
Can you, can you guys hear Jason?
I said I would vote for per meeting. I would think with the availability of emails as we've been getting in the past, you know, it's all, I, I feel like people can get their point across with four minutes per.
So in the portion of the policy that says to ensure fair access, no individual will be allowed to address the board more than twice during the meeting? We want to change that to only once?
Well, I just, it's a little bit confusing the way it reads.
I agree, because I, I misinterpreted that.
Yeah, so I think that just cleaning up the language, I'm sorry, can you hear me? I think that cleaning up the language in this document is going to be another priority for us to make sure that it's clear for us, clear for our community members and our participants. It's, it's just, it's a little muddled and, and we can definitely do better.
Absolutely.
Like I said, we've been doing once per meeting and we've been allowing, I mean, the four minutes. I put a timer there just as a fail safe so people can hear it, they know, they go over, they're getting close, we just let them go. I feel like we're accommodating on that behalf. So I think four minutes per meeting with us being lenient in that manner, I think that's more than fair. Agree? I mean, that's just my opinion.
I agree. Anyone else? Okay, so we'll continue to get some data put in place for us to look at and, uh, move, move forward. Well, we, we have to figure out that language. Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right, so we're going to do public participation. So if you could bring up the clipboard. Tim, can you? Yeah, so that's, if you do decide that you do want to speak, while we are going through the, these participants right now, you can sign up for the second session and the documents back there. So today, we're going to start with Jennifer Williams.
I didn't even, I didn't actually review the agenda. I didn't, I know that you were kind of discussing that, but I can add something for that. But my, um, the thing I was going to say about public comment is there's, there is another district in Wayne County that I've observed that I think if they do something that I think is extremely helpful to their community. If anytime that someone does come and speak at the public comment section, whatever they speak about, that is added to the agenda at the next meeting and then is addressed. A lot of people have complained throughout the county, not just SOTUS, that if they address something at a board meeting, they never hear anything back. And I, I do understand that is your prerogative to answer or not. However, your community would like more communication. And if someone does take the time to come and ask you or present an issue, then if you put it on your agenda for the next meeting, then it is guaranteed to be addressed. You know, like say someone wants, you know, let's make purple floors, you know, to show school spirit. You can say so-and-so said purple floors for school spirit, anyone wanted to add anything. And whether you say something or not, it doesn't matter, but you give everyone an opportunity. And that's the thing. As far as the comment section, as far as speaking, another, uh, uh, district, they have two different comment sections. The first one speaks to the agenda. Anything that's on the agenda can be addressed at that particular time. And that makes a lot of sense because whatever you speak about on the agenda, if you wait and public comment is after the fact and you possibly already voted on something, anything we say is going to be null and void anyway. So maybe if you open up your public comment, the first section to be agenda items only, and that could be focused and that could be really concise, like what you're trying to say, to specifically to what's on the agenda, and then have your second public comment section to be whatever, you know? And, and I, I do disagree that, um, you know, one person can only speak once because like at my, my, we're making it a night. I had two things, one was agenda specific and one wasn't. And I spoke twice and, um, you know, and so it was helpful. So, you know, just like, you know, and if you want to put it down to three minutes instead of four minutes, so that you allot more time for people to speak, I think most people can get their point across in three minutes versus four. So if you're trying to condense time, maybe, and I under, and I do appreciate you trying to give people enough time with the four minutes versus the three, but if maybe I make an adjustment that way versus a person can only speak once versus twice if there's two different things they want to talk about. Because, you know, you're getting to know us and you know we got a lot to say and sometimes, you know, we can't get it all done in one. Thank you.
No. Thank you. Meredith Carroll?
So I put down public comment just because I wasn't sure which one of the two topics I wanted to talk about tonight. Initially, I thought I was going to talk about masking because it's making my daughter's life a living hell in this school. But Tuesday, I picked her up and she told me that there was a boy in the girls' bathroom. And she didn't feel comfortable going to one of the teachers because she thought that she was going to get in trouble for it. So instead, I am going to talk about It Feels Good to Be Yourself since you're going to be reviewing this book. I figured I would educate some people on the background of gender theory as it is presented in books like It Feels Good to Be Yourself, as if it is fact. This is incredibly troubling since this book is targeting young children who already have a difficult time understanding the difference between imagination and fact. And this book presents gender theory as if it is fact. Gender theory is nothing more than a prolonged attack on what it means to be a woman. And I am offended to my literal core that someone added this book to the library without any oversight whatsoever. Gender theory was first coined by Dr. John Money, a psychologist who conducted what has been called the most unethical study in history in the 1960s. David Reimer was born as Bruce Reimer in 1965. At eight months, Bruce and his twin Brian went for a routine circumcision. However, Bruce was terribly botched and lost his penis during this procedure. John Money was a well-known psychologist and a sexologist at the time. Money suggested that Bruce should have a sex shake as plastic surgery was not advanced enough to reconstruct his penis. Unknown to Bruce's parents, Money had an ulterior motive. He presented this as the only option for their son to have any kind of normal life. Money had been working on a theory that any boy could be raised as a girl. He believed that nurture was more important than nature when it came to gender roles. The Reimer twins provided Money with a perfect sample, two boys, one believing they were a girl, raised by the same people in the same way. This allowed Money to experiment on Bruce while using Brian as a control. Bruce underwent surgery and was raised as Brenda, a girl. Brenda behaved exactly as a little girl, playing with dolls, baking cookies, wearing dresses, et cetera. Money published his works stating that he had evidence to back up his theory. However, around age seven, Brenda began to act in a masculine way. In an attempt to stop this, Money tried to force Brenda to realize that he was female. And in some cases, he's even accused of acting in a pedophilic way towards both of the boys. Around the age of 13, Brenda began to look and act incredibly masculine, rejecting the femininity that had been forced upon him. Brenda's parents eventually told him the truth when he was 14. Immediately, he decided that he wanted to be a boy again. He stopped taking his hormones and changed his name to David. David later had surgery to reconstruct the penis and went on to have a wife and children. However, aged 38, he committed suicide, two years after Brian had killed himself. It is believed that they both committed suicide because of the methodology used by Money and his impact on their life. Money's reputation was ruined after he reported successes on a flawed experiment. Perhaps the biggest issue was that Money's experiment did not only ruin the lives of the whole family, but ultimately led to the death of the twins. However unethical this study was, it could be concluded from the findings that gender roles are biologically innate with nature overriding nurture. Despite this study being a complete and utter failure that literally killed its subjects, somehow the idea that there is no biological basis to being a man or a woman has infected our culture to the point where we are introducing young children to concepts they cannot possibly comprehend because the human brain doesn't finish developing until the age of 25. Money's gender theory should have been stricken from the English language after what happened to the Reimer twins. But people who worship at the altar of gender ideology have taken the term and run with it, completely ignoring the massive amounts of biological and scientific evidence that yes, there are differences between male and female brains and that even the most feminine of male brains still shows on their scale as a male brain. These ideologists insist that it is someone's feelings that make them a male or a female rather than their biology, which is a despicable lie. Regardless of what Shania Twain once said, you can't feel like a woman. When you subscribe to the idea that a boy is a girl simply because he wants to wear dresses or paint his fingernails or that a girl is a boy because she doesn't like wearing bras, hangs out in the landfill all day and keeps her hair short, then being a woman becomes a costume you can take on and off at will. And anyone who disagrees with you is a bigot. I can think of nothing more misogynistic than telling biological women who object to being turned into a costume that they need to sit down and shut up. This is the world It Feels Good to Be Yourself presents to children and will serve no other purpose but confuse them. I am not a woman because I sometimes wear makeup. I'm not a woman because I sometimes wear a dress. I am not a woman because I occasionally played with Barbies growing up. I also played with Hot Wheels and made bows and arrows out of sticks in our backyard and had border staff battles with my siblings after watching The Adventures of Robin Hood one too many times. My daughter is not an email because she used to wear tutus when she was three. And despite how many times she said she's a boy, which has always boiled down to I fit in better with boys, she is now and always will be a girl. To push the idea that a. To push the idea that a boy can be a girl because he feels like one, or a girl can be a boy because she feels like one enrages me. We are women because our DNA says we are, because our hormones insist we are, because the overwhelming majority of us bleed every month and are capable of bearing offspring, something no man will ever understand, no matter how much he feels like a woman. Gender theory and the idea that there is some kind of spectrum is decimating women's sports, silencing women's voices, endangering girls in locker rooms, bathrooms, and prisons, including my nine-year-old daughter, who had a boy in her bathroom and didn't feel she could tell anyone because they would be upset with her. I am not some feeling. And anyone who thinks I am in the name of tolerance is not only denying basic scientific fact, but my very existence. If you insist, I'm keeping It Feels Good to Be Yourself in the library, then I demand in the name of diversity, you immediately add Johnny the Walrus by Matt Walsh to the library so that children have a real understanding of what imagination is. And that if a boy says they're a girl one day, it doesn't actually make them a girl, no matter how much their woke white progressive mothers think it does. If you are incapable of doing this, then I demand your resignations before you, your incompetence, and obvious ideological bias further damages any children in this community. Should you refuse to resign, then at the very least, educate yourselves on this topic and many others of which you are incredibly ignorant.
Meredith, your time is way over.
I'm aware. I'm done. My nine-year-old girl walked into the bathroom with a fifth-grade boy and didn't feel that she could tell a teacher. That is the school that you have created. She did not feel that she could walk out into the hallway and find a teacher without getting yelled at for having her mask down, for not being where she was supposed to be, or for not returning to her class. That's the atmosphere you have created here.
Vonda Travis?
So first of all, I just wanna make it very clear. I don't know a single one of you outside of this environment here, so I have absolutely nothing personal. No hard feelings against a single one of you, okay? But at some point, regardless of which side of the fence we're on, we need to realize that this COVID thing, something is wrong, and it's terribly wrong. The more we comply, the higher this bar is raised each and every single time. Stop holding our kids hostage for federal government money. Because that makes you just as guilty as the federal government. There's a private group that SOTA's parents are allowed to join. That gives us the opportunity to speak amongst other parents and discuss what it is that we'd like to regain control of in our school districts for parents. I find it very odd that one of the board members in front of me chose to join that group. It's even oddly disturbing that the person who chose to join that group clearly has no backbone, in my opinion, because I've seen absolutely no opposition from any single one of you board members anytime something with a confrontational subject comes up. Not one of you speaks up. Not one of you. Like every single one of you is a puppet. Come May, when two of your seats become open, I want you to know there will be board, there will be community members who will be running for your positions, okay? These folks will be liberty-minded and have the interest of the children in that government grant money at their agendas, okay? Your actions speak far louder than any words you can ever say. It seems that the oath that every single one of you took to take the office when you were elected has gone astray. You took an oath which asked you to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America. But have you really done that? Or is it something you just learned in school? When I spoke about the book It Feels Good to Be You in the last board meeting, we did make the formal request, and I appreciate you taking the time to put a committee together to review that. But what I want you to also understand, that when we start putting those ideas in our children's heads this big, that's a problem. I don't know if you guys have heard about the story about the 12-year-old child from Florida. A 12-year-old little girl in Florida attempted suicide twice because she was having a gender identity crisis. One of those times was in the school bathroom where she attempted to hang herself. Any one of you who have children, I don't care what age they are, how would you feel if you got that call saying that your child attempted to hang themselves in the school bathroom because they were receiving counseling services from the school counselor regarding a gender identity crisis and the parent was never notified? It almost brings me to tears. It's wrong. Please, take this book out of our library. It is not necessary. I mentioned last month that every child goes home to a loving home. I'm sorry, I'm very passionate about that. Suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in our country, second in our teenagers. You've heard these numbers over and over again. But it doesn't matter how many times we repeat them, it doesn't seem like you guys are gonna even give a crap. Okay, it's like another number just being presented to you like the number's up here. What I'd like to see personally, I'm gonna ask the board. I would like for you to take into consideration, I wanna know exactly how many of our students are struggling mentally. I wanna know how many of our students speak to, anonymously, of course, how many of our students are speaking to our counselors because they're suicidal? How many of our students have had suicidal thoughts? How many students can't come to school because they're so anxiety-ridden? They need to stay home. Children can recover from being behind in reading. They can recover from being behind in math. But you know what they can't recover from? A successful suicide. That could never be recovered from. Why is it that thousands of people can pour into a stadium vaccinated or not vaccinated in masks? Or unmasked, I'm sorry. But it doesn't matter if you're vaccinated in our school system or not, you're still gonna wear a mask. You're still forcing our children to wear a mask whether they've been vaccinated or not, okay? Have you forgotten that masking and vaccinating doesn't do a darn thing? It doesn't. Read the science. COVID still has a higher survival rate than suicide, mental depression. When the New York State Supreme Court judge ruled that mandates were unconstitutional, you chose to continue to follow the direction of nice that enforced children to wear them regardless. You all agreed once again to uphold the Constitution of the United States. It's been over 700 days, folks, 700. Every single one of you have been exposed. In the meetings I've attempted, attended, you're still here, you're doing okay. Cloth masks don't work, so why are we still making our kids wear them? They've already said the cloth masks do not work. It's time to admit this. It's time to admit this, take this into thought. You received a grant. Let's just call it blood money, because that's exactly what it is. You have accepted blood money to continue to mask your children. And you should be ashamed of yourselves. You've received blood money to indoctrinate our children via DEI in our school systems. $3.3 million, $596,000 to be exact. It's time to admit, SOTA Central School District, that you have been blackmailed by the federal government, and I hope you're happy. Our children are not for sale. Did you hear me? Our children are not for sale. Get yourself some integrity. Our children are not okay. Once again, I wanna ask that we take into consideration mental health. How about the next meeting we, oh, I'm sorry, went through that. Children have the ability to grow, to recover. Once again, suicide's permanent. Every single time a board meeting comes up, we're gonna be here. We're not gonna go away. Every time an election comes up, we're gonna be here and we're gonna run. And every single time, we're gonna continue to do this. We're gonna flush the toilet. We're gonna flush the toilet until 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Seven of those seats are filled by someone who is passionate and caring about our children. And if you guys don't know what's going on in Canada, I would highly suggest you stay off mainstream media and get yourself an education. Because what's happening in Canada is coming to the United States, and it's coming fast. So you better stack your freezers and you better buckle up your pants, because it's coming.
Thank you, Vonda. Rob? Shut?
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Few, if any, few, if any, people are entirely good or entirely bad from a secular standpoint. For example, we tend to consider a person either generous or not generous, compassionate or not compassionate. In reality, though, how generous or compassionate a person is is highly impacted by circumstance. We may be generous with some things, and other things not so much. At the January board meeting, I shared some rationale for my request for the superintendent to resign. Spontaneously, two people scrambled to get added to the public comment list to tell of all the good things the superintendent has done and how much they like him. I would like to take this opportunity to tell you how much I like Elsa. I agree with most of what they said. With what most of these kind people said. You see, no person, including myself, is entirely successful or entirely unsuccessful either. There are many things I like about Mr. Kice. Prior to the investigative work I've been doing over the past year, I would have said very similar things. And I still agree with many of the things that were said. It's unfortunate that you constrain our free speech to four minutes, which generally leads to remarks being largely focused on the negative when there's a lot of negative topics to cover. I genuinely like Mr. Kice on a personal level and have for many years. However, this isn't a popularity contest. A really nice, likable person doesn't necessarily make a suitable school superintendent, especially in times of unprecedented crisis. Crisis reveals the character of people, and certainly, the character of federal, state, and local government officials has been clearly revealed over the past 23 months. I wanna restate, I have nothing to gain personally from being here and doing what I'm doing. I don't have any kids in this school. I have no personal gain. I'm here speaking for the kids and the staff and the parents. The science is clear, masks do absolutely nothing to prevent transmission of the virus that causes COVID-19. No less than 227 scientific studies and medical articles back up that truth, as well as the truth that masks harm people in lasting ways, particularly children. The false narrative of masking and other aspects of this so-called pandemic continue to crumble. Children have a statistical 0% chance of lasting harm from the virus. Zero. Follow the science. The science you've chosen to trust is political science. You quarantine healthy children. You force a medical device on the children and staff when you are wholly unqualified to offer any medical advice. Masks are responsible for the proven delays in normal childhood development according to studies done this past year. The school board's been made aware of this information repeatedly, so I'm left to conclude this is not being done out of ignorance. Our student aptitude scores are dismal. This is not a reflection on the teachers, they are doing admirably given the circumstances. In my opinion, school leadership actions have had a direct negative impact on aptitude scores. Students need in-person learning without a face covering and without being treated like they are leprous if they happen to have been near a symptomatic person who happened to test positive, especially given that the tests have been proven to generate up to 80% false positives. The current virus is similar to a seasonal cold, less serious than typical flu, seasonal flu, and that's been around forever without the use of mandates. This isn't about public health. It's about money and power. School leadership has not been transparent about how much money they've received per student for keeping them masked, quarantined, and/or out of school. It's literally a payoff. Money has been chosen over physical health. Money has been chosen over mental health. Money has been chosen over quality education. Parents are the health authority for their children. That was taken away due to greed for money and power. Your policies have harmed the children more than the disease ever could have. The truth continues to come out, and your actions will be shown to have caused unnecessary permanent harm. I invite you to admit these mistakes now. Embrace the avalanche of truth that's coming out. Stand up for the children and staff and end this charade immediately. I'll conclude my remarks again, as I have before, with a quote from Dietrich Bonhoeffer, who was a self-proclaimed pacifist who relinquished that view that he held during the time of Nazi rule in Germany. "God will not hold you guiltless. Not to speak is to speak. Not to act is to act."
Thank you, Rob. Kevin Young?
Hello, this is in reference to, yes, the book, The Blue-Eyed Eye. If I'm understanding correctly, this was available to seventh graders in the library. When I was seven, in seventh grade, not when I was seven, but when I was in seventh grade, I was dragged into a men's room stall and sexually assaulted. This was in a summer camp. It was by an older teenager. The Blue-Eyed Eye goes into great detail about a man who sodomized children, specifically little girls, who assaulted his own daughter, and went into great detail to describe every little act, from biting her little titties, to inserting his finger in their vagina, and all the rest. And if somebody out there is a little shocked at the words that I'm using, it's in the book that you're letting seventh graders read. When this guy was done with me, he told me that if I ever told anybody that you would blame me and tell everybody that it was my idea. Well, here was a guy that was four years older, probably 40 pounds heavier, and a good head taller than me. I simply didn't have the strength to resist. I was too young, I was too small, and I was naive enough to believe that this man could actually get away with blaming me for this entire occasion. What I'm trying to tell you is that seventh graders are too naive, too uneducated to understand the nuance of sexuality. They're still learning, and yet, the schools and the collegiate systems are insisting on training people to sexualize children at a younger and younger age. There's even that story about a man who apparently is a professor at Fredonia State University that thinks it's just fine and dandy to have sex with an eight-year-old. And it was in public news. In the end of the book, The Blue-Eyed Eye, apparently, justice is served, and the father gets his commuppance. But if you give this book to a teenager, they're not going to be able to necessarily factor out the morality of what they know. factor out the morality of what they may be doing by victimizing somebody. Okay, so the guy gets his just to come up and say the net. Meanwhile, they're reading the literature and possibly getting quite turned on by the graphic description of this book. And you're letting it stay in the library. Good for you. I hope you're proud of it.
Thank you for your candor, Mr. Young. Gene Hoskins?
Setting my timer so I can keep the four minutes. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am addressing you right now as a parent of a SOTUS student who graduated from here and as a taxpayer who's been in the district for a long time. I have been coming to board meetings my entire administrative career, and I think this may be the very first time I've ever spoken up in public participation. There's been a lot of things said at board meetings over the past six or seven months that I may agree with or may disagree with, but I always have believed that it's important as school officials that we are neutral in any type of debate. But last week, or last month, rather, during public participation, some comments were made about the impact of equity, civil rights, racial diversity PD. And, you know, for two or three weeks, I have been trying to get past that, and I realized I needed to address the board. So it is critically important, in my opinion, that school be a place where students feel welcome, that family heritage is affirmed, diversity is celebrated, and all students need a sense of belonging. They cannot learn, they do not have that sense that they are safe and they belong. I want to share, a lot of times, people get upset when they hear the term white privilege. And a lot of times, people feel like, well, I'm white and I haven't done anything wrong. What does that, what does white privilege mean? And what it means is that we can't, when we're white, we can't relate to what it means to be a person of color in this society. A number of years ago, when Arkey Allen was my assistant principal, he asked me on a Saturday if I wanted to go to the outlet mall with him. He was bringing his nephew, who was graduating a year early, had already been accepted at several colleges, and he wanted to buy him a suit. So we went in. I was wearing my typical Saturday gear, which was sweatpants and a hoodie. On any given day, Arkey Allen looks better than me, but he, of course, was dressed very nice, nice pair of jeans, leather jacket. His nephew looked very nice. We went into this store with a lot of high-end menswear, and we were walking around, and we got separated. And one of the salespersons come up to me and asked me, you know, could they help me? Was I interested in anything? And honestly, obviously, I was just looking. They could look at me, I was probably not gonna buy a dress for it, for what I was wearing. And then about 10 minutes later, one of the salespeople asked Arkey's nephew if he was gonna, you know, could he help him? And he said, I was just looking. And then they went over and talked with the manager, and a few minutes later, the manager came over to Arkey and said, sir, my people are nervous. If you're not gonna buy anything, you need to leave. And that happened. That happened in the outlet mall in, over near Geneva. And I gotta tell you, it is something that opened my eyes. I mean, it was so infuriating, so dehumanizing, and I couldn't believe it happened. And that is the kind of thing that those equity and racial diversity PDs help people who are not of color understand so that when our kids are coming through a district, we can help them feel, sorry, we can help them feel affirmed and safe, and that we understand where they're coming from. I know Jim Wood. I will say that, you know, he and I worked together for a lot of years. He retired from SOTUS Central School District. Certainly, he and I had some lively debates over the education of students over the years. But one thing that I think he is beyond reproach about is his desire to build a safe and empowering and affirming community for all students at SOTUS. And regarding to questions of the leadership and decision-making, I would just point out a couple of things to the board. I think we are one of the only school districts that I know of in the area that has never had to shut down a day because of COVID. We have managed to keep our doors open for students who wanted in-person learning at a time when that wasn't happening anywhere else in the area at the rate that we were able to do. And I would also point out that at one point, the board felt strongly enough about the work that went into this sign that describes our community, and it was something that came out of a group project of stakeholders with parents, community members, and students, and staff members. And it says, "We are SOTUS. We are resilient, tolerant, hardworking, generous, persistent, and dedicated. We are neighbors, family, and friends. We are historic. We are respectable, responsible, kind, and safe. We are multicultural, but we are one community. We take pride in our school and our community. We are unbreakable. We are sparks." I have lived that every day of my career. I am thrilled that I had a son that was able to come through and graduate from SOTUS and that he went through a school district, that he got to see many other kids with different backgrounds, and we celebrate diversity in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Therese McKinney Wood?
I'm the parent of a first grader at SOTUS Elementary, and I also have a two-year-old daughter. I grew up in SOTUS. I graduated in the class of 2000. I moved back to SOTUS this past summer with my family after living in the Boston area for a decade. I always felt very grateful to have grown up in such a diverse, close-knit community. SOTUS has always held a very special place in my heart in the many places that I've lived. I think part of this is because there are so many caring adults here, people like Mr. Kice and the members of this board, the teachers and administrators in the SOTUS school system, and especially the parents, who've just committed so much time and energy to making sure the children here thrive. And I truly believe that everyone here, even many speakers who I've disagreed with this evening, wanna do what's in the best interest of kids. That said, I am very troubled by the recent challenges to books in our school libraries, and I want to offer a different perspective. Throughout my life, books have been an incredible tool to help me better understand and build empathy for those who have had different life experiences than mine, different identities than mine. And at times when I felt alone, books have helped me feel seen. For my children, books have been an incredible tool for helping them understand the many things they've come across in their world. And I'd like to share a specific example. A few years ago, a new family moved in on our old street where we lived outside of Boston. They had a teenager, a really nice, quiet kid who loved dogs, wanted to walk everybody's dog on the street to try and convince their parents that they should get a dog. That kid happened to be in the process of transitioning from being a girl to a boy. And I don't care what you believe about whether or not that's okay, but that was what was happening. My son was about four years old at the time. And he's a kid. He had some big questions about that, and I was not prepared to answer them. I didn't know what to say. So I went to the library. That's what I do. My kid has questions, and I can answer. And I checked out a book out of their children's collection on gender identity in transgender kids. So I could explain it to him, using language that he would understand, because I did not know what to say. And reading this book didn't change my son's perspective on who he is. It didn't confuse him, but it helped him better understand what our neighbor was doing, which was really valuable from my perspective. I don't know if our neighbor had access to books that made him feel seen when he was in elementary school. I really hope he did. But I personally am very grateful that our school librarians have made sure that the kids can so good to do. Because SOTUS has every kind of kid, and they all deserve to feel like they belong here.
Cody Christensen?
I'd like to start off by saying that I believe kids come to school to learn. That can be a part of the political agenda. CRT does not belong in the school district. And also, we're two years into this COVID virus. To start out with two weeks of playing the curve, when does it end? Massive improvement is not effective, and you're robbing our kids of their childhood essentially by continuing to force them to wear masks in school. If I had to do that when I was in school, running with a mask on, my fond memories of school would have been way different than looking back, because, sorry, I'm a little nervous, but I just don't think that kids should be forced to be a part of a political agenda and something that's about money. As a previous speaker said, it's blood money. We should be doing what's in the best interest of the children and mental health. I myself was a victim of sexual molestation in seventh grade, and I want to address that book, The Blue-Eyed Eye. If I read that book in the midst of being sexually molested, I would have broken down, and I would have had a PTSD attack reading that in school. That book does not belong in a bookshelf book, a school for children, a child to read. It is way too graphic, and it does not belong in any school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Oh, I was writing notes on my agenda. All right, so we have committee reports from the audit team. You guys met?
Yeah, we did meet, sorry. Yeah, we did meet today. I was pleased to see that the auditor had not found very much of concern. So it looked like, you know, Steve and the department's doing a good job.
Okay, thank you for sharing. I need a motion to pass, consensus motion one, please.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion for consensus motion number two, please.
Open.
Second, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did anyone else sign up for public participation? Nope? Okay. You can sign right now. Do you want to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Hopefully, this makes sense, but I just think that schools should just teach children how to survive. I mean, teachers should always be on the look, because, you know, we care about these kids, right? We want to make sure that everyone is happy and is good to graduate. Well, from my personal experience from being a student at this school, no one didn't pay attention to me. I'm half Puerto Rican and a half white. Okay? I got, like, four black girls used to harass me all the time, and no one didn't do anything about it. And then, because being half Puerto Rican, the white kids didn't want to be around me. So what was this critical race theory about, you know, talking about BLM and Black Lives Matters, which I really do appreciate, because it did change a lot of people's perspectives on it? But we are kind of using this as for more of a political standard than actual feelings, because how long has BLM been lasting for? Way before this pandemic. This has been happening like in the early 2000s, I think? But now we're hearing about Black Lives Matter when we're having political issues? Sounds a little fishy to me. Plus, my dad, who was Puerto Rican, you know, during the time of, I was like four years old, and he was like trying to be a firefighter, okay? And he had like a psych eval test done before being so, before, you know, being hired as a firefighter or whatever. And all I know is that they didn't care about his test scores, they just cared because he was Puerto Rican. And because my dad does have standards, he does, you know, has value in himself, he didn't think that was right. So he just walked away from it. So anyways, I just think that, um, hold on, that teachers should just definitely look out and see if, like, kids are being bullied and just give some wisdom on how to keep the peace. But you really can't change what's happening at home. But yeah, for being in this school, though, I just, man, I wanted to kill myself. And no one saw me. Like, I had no friends and teachers. And so like, you know, kids, because of my first impression experience of how nobody wanted to hang out with me for the rest of, until I graduated, okay? I did have one friend, but she moved, and I graduated alone, and it was the most difficult thing ever. I didn't want to get up. And then, you know, what's funny is that in the last years of being in this school, I remember I missed so many days of school that they were gonna put me on pins. But no one didn't ask me why I was missing school. They just said, this is what this is, deal with it, basically. And they said that they were hearing me out, but I didn't feel like I was being heard out. I sure didn't. I know teachers, too, sometimes would kind of give me that, like, that look that I was a trouble kid, maybe because of my older brother, but no one really got to know me. I don't even remember some of these teachers' names that, like, you know, taught me anything, because I was so focused on just trying to get to the day and wonder why everyone hated me. I don't know. And also, about these vaccines, let me tell you what. I worked for the Finger, I used to work for the Finger Lites DDSO. It's about, you know, helping individuals who are deemed to psychiatric patients who have mental disability, how do I say this, like, without being rude, or MR? I don't want to be rude. I love these guys. I love these guys, you know? I really do. But some of these guys didn't even want to take the vaccine, and, you know, this is for the state, New York State, that I work underneath, like, you know, I got letters from President Cuomo. And even though it was their choice, the state was still, like, grooming these guys to get the vaccine, even though they didn't want to, because it's safety protocol. Even though that Facebook, you know, did say that this was supposed to be testing trials, the, you know, vaccine information that you see on Facebook every time you see a post about vax. So this was supposed to be a trial, not something that was actually medically proven to be safe, but everyone disregarded that because science. But some of these guys, though, had severe reactions to these vaccines. I know some people who've been on breathing tubes, but because science says that, you know, but because we, at the time, that science couldn't figure out this was really safe, no one can really say. Plus, these guys really can't really speak for themselves. We have to, and at the same time, the people above us are, like, pressing on a staff to, like, press these guys to get the vaccine, because it's about making money. It's really not about your health or safety. I mean, anytime these individuals, like, they would, like, have, like, a psychiatric mental breakdown, instead of actually talking about it and dealing with their problems, we're just paid to pop them a pill. So it's really not, so what I'm just learning from working for the state and then also going to a school that is run by the state, it's not about making, it's not about mental health, it's just about making money. I mean, prove, I mean, tell me that I'm wrong, but hear me out as well from my point of view. So thank you for your time and listening.
Thank you. Gloria Rodriguez?
So my concern is also about the book, The Blue-Eyed Eye. And, you know, I was here when Mrs. Young read the first excerpt, and I was pretty disturbed by it. Then I heard that all of you unanimously voted to keep it. And today, it was even posted on the SOTUS Facebook page that the board unanimously voted to keep the book, and it was celebrated, that people were happy about this, concerned about book banning, things like that. This is not an issue of banning. You know, I, I, I work for Joan, she, anyways, that's a tough, I went to her house today, and she showed me more excerpts, more from the book. It is so graphically explicit. It is literary porn that you guys have made available to children. You have made literary pornography available to minors. Not a single one of you had the courage to say, hey, guys, maybe we should pass on this book. Someone that I love very dearly has had happen to her some of the things described in that book when she was young, around the ages that those books describe. I cannot see justifying making that available for casual reading or historical reading or whatever you want to label it as. There are better ways to teach. If you want to teach about what happened to people, what happened to black women back in the day, those kinds of things, if you want to teach that, that's valuable stuff to teach, but not in that format. This is not about censorship. This is about availability of graphic content to children. It's okay to say, we'll pass on this book. Let parents make the decision what's available to their children, not the school board. It's not your job to decide what they learned and how they learned about sex. It's the parent's job, and we all know that kids can go and get such a thing without telling their parents, a book that their parents would never agree to them having. And because you guys said it's okay, you have now circumvented the authority of a parent on what their child's allowed to read and how they're allowed to understand sexuality. Have some courage. Say, we're going to pass on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Okay, we need a motion for consensus motion number three. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then we need a motion to go into our anticipated executive session for the purpose of discussing the position of a particular person. After that, we'll be just coming back together quickly to put together an agenda for the next meeting. Can I have a motion for consensus motion number four, please?
Motion.
Sarah, second. Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Thank you very much.